Five now. Um, we do, we do have a quorum of three, so that's fine. Someone, oh, there's Ray, okay?
I'm here.
I thought I saw Ray for a second.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Very good. Welcome, everybody, to the February fourteenth meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Linscott. President. Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Here. Okay, so the first item of business. Um, let's see, this is before oral communications. Uh, it's the election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair and Committee and other representatives. Um. So the first item of business is to, oh, let's have the staff report first, I guess. Um, go ahead.
Do we, do we have open agenda items for the public or?
Um, well, no, oral communications is after this.
It's after this, okay.
Yeah. Although, um, the public is free to speak on this item if they wish, and I will, uh.
We should honor that tradition, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, let me.
Since our council might not be.
Let. Let me go to the participants here, okay, and see if anybody wishes to speak on the election, um. Nobody has their hands raised there, so go ahead, can we have the, um, the staff report first, or should we do the? I guess let's do the election first, because there is, the staff report is only for the committee assignments. Um, so great, so I will open, um, nominations, uh, first for the chair. Does anybody want to nominate anyone?
So I would like to nominate, uh, Steven Sharp, the current chair, to continue as chair for this year.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Oh, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, um, any other nominations for chair? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote for, to elect myself as chair?
Sorry about that, I was just trying to catch up on my notes, let me go ahead and take the role now. Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Linscott. No. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharp.
Yes.
Motion carries three, one, zero, one.
Great, okay, now we are on to the, uh, election of Vice Chair. Can we have, would anyone like to nominate anyone for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Mooney Madipatla for Vice Chair.
And I will second that. Um, any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote for Vice Chair?
Sorry, before I do that, I just want to confirm that it was Commissioner Wong that made the motion and then seconded by Sharp?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Linscott. Yes. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Uh, yes.
So motion carries four, zero, zero, one.
Uh, well, you mean four, zero, one. Okay. Um, okay, so next we have the staff report for committee assignments, can we have that report, please?
Sure, and, um, for, um, the record.
Pardon me, I believe Commissioner Feng is trying to get in, so hopefully I see him in the.
Oh, yeah, there he is, okay.
There he is, thank you, so let the record show that he arrived.
I apologize, I was, uh, I didn't, uh, get my account set up by the, uh, right link, but here I am now.
Okay, um, so we're on to the, uh, item. Uh, one of the, the staff reports for committee assignments, uh, welcome, uh, who, who's giving the staff report?
If you want, if you want, Sarah, you can go ahead and do that, but let me know if you'd like me to do it.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, good evening, members of the commission, um, I just, this is the portion of the staff report that's focused on the committee appointees. Um, to what would be the Environmental Review Committee and the Design Review Committee. Um, your, the, the chair of the commission, of the Planning Commission has typically served on the Environmental Review Committee. Though the Pl- Planning Commission has the opportunity to appoint another member. Uh, the DRC, the Vice Chair has typically served on that, as well as another member of the Planning Commission that would be chosen by the commission. So, uh, those are the committee appointments that would be before you tonight. If you have any other questions of staff, we can be happy to answer those.
Okay, um, as I understand it, um, the city council was trying to abolish, uh, both of those or one of those? Is that true?
There is an upcoming agenda item where both of these committees' responsibilities, yes, could be, uh, essentially the committees would be eliminated and their responsibilities would be transferred either to the Planning Commission or staff. So there is the possibility that both the ERC and the DRC would not be continuing for much longer.
Okay, well, I guess we have to elect, uh, anyway for now, so.
Correct.
And you said the chair normally serves, um, for the Environmental Review Committee?
Correct, yeah, the Environmental Review Committee has typically been the chair of the Planning Commission. Uh, the DRC has been the Vice Chair along with another Planning Commission member.
Okay, um, but we still have to do nomination and election, right, so?
Correct.
Okay. Um. All right, well, I guess I'll nominate myself for the Environmental Review Commission for as long as it continues. Um, is there a second?
Happy to second.
Okay, um, anyone else, any other nominations for Environmental Review Commission? I mean, okay, so let's vote for the first one and then we'll find another member. So can we have a roll call vote, uh, for myself to serve on Environmental Review Commission?
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linscott. Yes. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
Chair Sharn.
Um, so now can we have a nomination for a second member to serve on, uh, the ERC?
I'd like to nominate David Feng.
Uh, all right, I'll second that. Anybody else? Okay, so seeing no other nominations and no, nothing from participants, let's have a vote, um, for David Feng for the second position on the ERC.
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linscott.
Seema.
Yep.
Your video is short.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong.
Yes, yes.
Aye, I think, yeah. Some place no glitz.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So now we are on to the Design Review, um, Commissioner Committee, and so, um, seeing as the Vice Chair normally serves, I'll nominate, um, Mooney Madipatla for, um, Design Review.
Actually, actually, Chair, I believe the code sets forth that the, the Vice Chair is, uh, will be on the Design Review Committee.
Oh, okay, so there's no, okay, so we, we just need a nomination for a second person then?
Correct.
Um, I, I'll nominate Seema Linscott.
I'll second that.
Do you accept Seema?
Sure, happy to do it.
Um, so we, uh, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, let's have a vote on Seema Linscott for Design Review.
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linscott. Yes. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, so why are the twenty twen- why is the agenda item for the twenty twenty-two there, is that just?
Reference?
Just reference, okay. Um. Okay, seeing that, I guess we are on to.
Excuse me, Chair, excuse me, Chair, um, I, I, I think there's also an additional alternate to the, to the Design Review Committee, um, for appointment. In addition to the Vice Chair and, and, and Commissioner Linscott.
But not to the ERC?
I believe it's the ERC as well.
Okay, well, um, let's have a nomination for the alternate to the Environmental Review Commission Committee.
I nominate Commissioner Ray Wang, assuming, you know, he accepts it. The second alternate.
Right.
Sure, fine.
All right, it's not, it's not often you get the esteemed position of second alternate, but.
Yeah.
First alternate, but.
First alternate, right, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Wait, does someone second that?
I will.
Okay. All right, if there's no more nominations for alternate, the ERC, this is ERC, right? Let's, uh.
DRC.
On the alternate, roll call?
That's Design Review, not ERC, I just want to make sure.
This is ERC, my understanding.
ERC, okay, cool.
ERC, yeah.
Someone asked, I want to make sure, so, okay.
All right, let's have a roll call vote for the ERC for Ray as the alternate.
Chair, if I may, I thought it was David Feng or Commissioner Feng, sorry, for the ERC as the alternate. Um, and then Commissioner Wong would be the alternate, second alternate for the Design Review Committee.
Right, wait.
There's, I think there's, there's normally two people, two commissioners on the DRC, only one commissioner on the ERC. So I'm, I'm the alternate for the ERC. The DRC actually often, um, it's difficult to get that quorum, so.
Yeah, that's why you're the alternate, so.
Yeah.
I, I will happily accept the alternate, the position and nomination for DRC to save everyone some time.
Okay, great, all right, so let's vote on that then.
Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linscott. Yes. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're done with that, we don't need another alternate for the, um, Environmental Review, is that right?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think we are on to item two now, the approval of minutes, um, from the last meeting, so there'll only be, um, three of us here that would be able to vote on that, um. Let me, yeah, so take a second to look at the draft minutes. Open them. Okay, so this was from the meeting on January twenty-fourth. Um, I think there was only one item there, right? Right, this was the noise, um, the noise limits.
Yeah, it was the construction noise issue before eight o'clock.
Right, okay. All right, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes of, um, January twenty-fourth.
I'll second that.
Okay, so let's have a vote on that.
Commissioner Feng.
Uh, abstain.
Commissioner Linscott.
Abstain.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharn.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, two, zero.
Okay, so there are no postponements, we are on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Uh, in most cases, state law would prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. And again, I remind people, this is for matters within the jurisdiction of the commission. Um, I see three hands raised so far. Uh, first is Jennifer, welcome Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Chair Sharp, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and the fact that you all brought up the ERC and DRC, um, I really hope that we're not going to get rid of those, I, they've been around the entire time I've been going to city council meetings, which was twenty-three years. And I'm a little bit nervous about the new booklet, like getting rid of being able to pull from consent calendar, limiting the public and what they can say, and then all of a sudden now we're trying to take away the ERC and DRC, okay? I, I, I'm, you know, when we're, so today we had Senator Weiner trumpeting how he is going to extend SB thirty-five for like another, I guess, forever, and I really feel like, I, I, I just, I feel like all of a sudden, everybody's taking away everything in California, we can't, Senator Weiner seems to be running the state, um, that's, we don't hear from our governor, we just hear from Senator Weiner saying how he's going to take away and make all the decisions, and I, that's why I'm feeling really sensitive about what's happening with our, with the public's access to things. I really don't want the ERC and DRC to go away, we haven't been able to have public vetting on that. Um, the items about the consent calendar to me is really, really threatening. Um, I, 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 I really, it's, it's scary to me, it's terrifying. And I, I really, I, I'm really scared what's happening with our state, with, with some of the politicians that are just so anti-people in California, that, you know, they, they say nasty things about people who live in cities. Um, you, you know, they're, they're people that were elected, other people elected them in other cities, but yet they're coming back and saying nasty things about people in our city and, uh, and where, where my relatives live. And i- it's almost like they were thinking they were taking over the state, and, and now we're losing our liberties in our own city, so I feel like in some ways, this whole manual thing is, is an outreach of Senator Weiner, his hand coming down and saying that the public has no right to speak, I'm sorry, I know he has nothing to do with, what happens in Cupertino, but I just can't, I, I feel very, very strongly that we are losing our liberties, and I do not want this to happen in my state or my city, so I'm, I'm, I'm being really sensitive about this, so thank you so much, uh, let's hope that we're not going down the road where we have, we're supposed to sit here fat, dumb, and happy and let people who weren't even elected by our city tell us what we're doing in this state, it's, it's getting abso-
I think we're out of time, Chair.
Sorry, yeah, Lisa, it's your, uh, your turn, go ahead, sorry, I was muted.
Okay, thanks, Lisa Warren, um, so first, I, I welcome the new commissioners, and I hope this next year plus goes well here, um, I do want to, and by the way, to all of you here, I'm grateful for you sort of putting Valentine's Day on hold, I know I'm gonna get to my husband as soon as possible, but we're here because it was scheduled for this day, so thanks for being here. And I want to just mention and give the heads up, please, to all of you who may or may not know how involved the Planning Commission was in approving, discussing, um, organizing, et cetera. The plans for Main Street Cupertino back in two thousand eight and beyond. The Planning Commission, rightly so, had a lot of say in that decision, and City Council, of course, made the final decision. But I just want to make all of you aware that there is now an effort by the property owner to make changes to what the ordinance from two thousand twelve was, when it finally got redone, after it was approved in two thousand nine, and then nothing was built for three years and they came back and doubled the size of the office, et cetera, et cetera, and changed the whole look of the thing. And a lot of the public, who was very involved in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, wasn't even aware that it came back in two thousand twelve. So my point here is, please understand, there is currently an effort to increase the restaurant square footage from what was approved in the ordinance and have basically an entertainment, late-night entertainment restaurant bar activities take the place of the Target site. Target was in Building Six, which was designated as major retail. And it was meant to be retail, not restaurant. Retail anchor, that's not a restaurant. Now there's a push for a twenty-two thousand square feet to become some big entertainment hub. And I don't think the people at the Metropolitan have been noticed of this, no one has. It's just kind of happening behind the scenes for over a year, so please pay attention.
Lisa, you're out of time, okay, next, um, Sam, Sam R., welcome.
Thank you, commissioners, I wish to congratulate all of you on the new planning commission, welcome the new commissioners that have come on board, Commissioner Linscott, Commissioner Wong. And, um, I want to congratulate the Chair and Vice Chair for being re-nominated. Um, I wish to bring to your attention that the, um, the decision that you all approved to, to deny the signage on I two eighty for the public storage was appealed at City Council, as you may have heard, some of you may have attended, and was approved at City Council. I would like to invite all of you to send in your comments to the City Council explaining your rationale for the denial of the permit, I know one of you attended and actually spoke at the public comments in the last City Council meeting. I would like for each of those that were on the prior planning commission to kindly write in to the City Council explaining your rationale for why that was denied. And I would further like you to invite City Council to join you in a walkthrough of the facility at night, so that you may show them in person the conditions there and how a signage that is illuminated would be out of place for the area. I have personally got friends of mine, uh, they happen to be, uh, parents of my kids' classmates who live with their bedroom facing that area, and they're already complaining, they have a kindergartner and a second grader who can't go to bed because those bright white lights from the public store are hitting their bedroom, and even if the blinds close, it is way too bright. They were not even aware that the signage is coming up. And I invite you to join me in visiting the area and bringing the council with you and overriding the override that was done of your decision. It is not fair to the residents of the condo community there that those bright white lights stay on till eleven PM, when kids should be in bed by nine or sooner. It is not fair that our community of residents are being overridden, and I encourage all of you to do the right thing and preserve the beauty and landscaping of I two eighty and not allow for a precedent to be set to have signage or even those bright white lights to disturb the wildlife and the beautiful nature that we have around here. Thank you very much, and I hope to get your support on this, uh, agenda, and if any of you would like to meet the condo residents, I'm happy to organize that, as it is my friend and my kid's friend, to be precise, uh, that is experiencing this right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to point out also that the Planning Commission doesn't have any, you know, power to override the decision, the decision of the City Council, that would, there'd have to be someone that files for reconsideration, um, and uh, that's the way that would work, um, okay, next we have Rhoda Frye, welcome Rhoda.
Uh, regarding Sam's comments, I will be filing for reconsideration. Um, and, you know, we're looking at a hundred and sixty-five square feet of illuminated signage on a one thousand square foot orange background. It's just not acceptable, and if we had an active design review committee, that public storage building would not have been built. Did you know that in two thousand six, a new public storage building had been proposed, where that new one is today? The Planning Department recommended against it, and the Planning Commission agreed. That building would have had three stories and a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet, what do we got now? Four stories, a hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet, the grounds for denial have not changed. The north end is a special area, and the general plan description has not changed. Why was a new building approved when we already knew it violated the general plan? In two thousand nineteen, the City Council approved the new public storage building, given certain conditions. I will list a few of them right now, and please do read my comments for more information. Quote, "In order to preserve design harmony between new and existing buildings, and in order to preserve and enhance property values, materials, textures, and colors of new buildings should harmonize with the adjacent development by consistent or compatible with design and color schemes and with future character of the neighborhood and purpose of zone in which they are situated." And "With respect to new projects within existing residential neighborhoods, new developments should protect residents from noise, traffic, light, and visually intrusive effects." Finally, "With respect to signage, outdoor advertising signs shall minimize traffic hazards and shall positively affect the general appearance of the neighborhood and harmonize with adjac- adjacent development." How do y'all think it turned out? How do y'all think it turned out? Finally, "I don't believe that this building should have been, have been categorically exempt from CEQA. Class thirty-two exemption is not available of the project and successive projects of the same type in the same place will result in cumulative impacts, which it absolutely positively does." Even the denial of the smaller building proposal mentioned an unacceptable intensification of use that failed to promote our general plans policies. What is the purpose of the Planning Department, the Planning Commission, and the City Council if it doesn't adhere to its promises to the citizens of Cupertino? As you know, the City Council overturned your determination not to allow the sign that would have been illuminated until eleven PM daily. I hope that you will join me in convincing the council to reconsider their vote. Moving forward, what can the Planning Commission do to reduce the glare on neighbors' privacy issues, um, et- et cetera? I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. Okay, um, were there any, were there any written communications that needed to be read during oral? Let's see, where is, Syra, what, so did anyone um send anything in during oral communications?
During the oral communication period, no, we did receive an email from Rhoda Frye.
Right, yeah.
Yes, which was received for the commission.
Right, and that was distributed, so that's great. Okay. Um, so there's nothing on consent calendar, so we are on to the public hearing um, to consider a conditional use permit for the concurrent sale of alcoholic beverages and gasoline at an existing Chevron gasoline service station. Application U twenty twenty-two oh oh six, applicant Steve Rawlings on behalf of Chevron Stations, location one one zero one zero North D'Anza Boulevard, accessory parcel number three oh nine oh four two oh four one. And the recommended action is that we adopt the proposed draft resolution and find the project exempt from CEQA and approve the conditional use permit. So may we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Shar. Um, I will be turning the staff presentation over to Associate Planner, uh Emmy Sugiyama. Um, I also just wanted to note that um, there were a couple of hands up. I saw that Syra had had her hand up as well as the Vice Chair, uh, Mari Patla. I didn't know if they wanted, had some comments before we got into the project.
Oh, I'm sorry, um.
Yes, so uh, I had a question, see if that's okay to ask.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, just don't comment on the oral communications unless it's, you know, very general.
Yeah, so the, the, this is uh regarding oral communication, I have a question to, you know, my uh attorney, city attorney, um, assistant attorney. Um, I know one of the residents offered to set up a meeting to meet with, you know, the residents, you know, that are impacted on that. So is there anything preventing us, you know, in engaging on that? I know it's a decision that's, you know, been done at the city council level and then also the other residents spoke about, you know, some appeal. All that is happening, but in the meantime, as a commissioner, is there anything, you know, preventing me from meeting with, you know, the residents that are impacted as offered by, you know, one of the uh oral communication speakers?
No, you, you may do so, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can I say a clarification, um, Assistant Attorney? Is that as an individual, not as a planning commission member? Is that correct?
You know, commissioners are entitled to meet with the public to discuss things of concern to them. Of course, if you're meeting with someone that's impacted decisions before you, then you would disclose that part, that contact before you make any decision.
I just want to make sure we're clear on the rules.
Yeah, yeah. No, the, the, the reason of this one, uh, when we discussed this project, that part of that specific element, you know, did not come up. So I want to understand if you missed something, you know, I want to understand, you know, what did we miss? Okay?
Yeah, so I have a kind of another question there. Um, one of my relatives is one of the people that's impacted. Does that affect my ability to talk to people or?
Here, let's, uh, I'm happy that the discusses for you with you, probably more appropriate.
I'll, I'll discuss it with you privately. That's fine. Okay. Um, very good. And, sorry, did you have something else? Uh, your hand is not up anymore. Okay, I guess not. Um, okay, so we are on to the staff report of um the, the gas station. So can we have the uh staff report, please, Emmy?
Yes, thank you, Chair Sharp. Um, Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff. And I'm here today to discuss a request by Chevron Stations for a conditional use permit. The project property is located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of North D'Anza Boulevard and Homestead Road on the northern boundary of the city, abutting the city of Sunnyvale. And the property is within the planned general commercial zoning district. Uh, the applicant Chevron Stations is requesting a conditional use permit for the concurrent sale of alcohol and gasoline at an existing Chevron gas station. As a bit of background, uh, operations for this gas station were originally approved in nineteen ninety-one through a use permit that allowed for fuel stations, a mini market and an attached drive-through car wash. The current and allowable hours of operation are from six A M to eleven P M. And this request does not include any exterior modifications uh to this existing station. Per the city's municipal code, a request for the concurrent sale of alcohol and gasoline must be allowed through a conditional use permit to be approved by the planning commission. Uh, each operation must follow these standards outlined here. Staff has found that the proposed operations will meet each of these requirements and that conditions have been included in the resolution to ensure consistent operation. Here you can see the proposed store layout with beer being stored in four coolers in the rear corner of the store uh with wine being displayed across from those beer coolers. And the applicant is also proposing that distilled spirits be contained in a display behind the cashier's station. To address potential concerns of security, the applicant is proposing that the storage of distilled spirits be behind the cash cashier's station. Um, additionally, the coolers and displays will be locked at closing of the mini market. And the provided security plan has also been reviewed and approved by the Sheriff's Department. This chart just outlines the locations that the city has previously approved for concurrent sale of alcohol and gasoline with the most recent being the approval on South D'Anza Boulevard in two thousand twelve. The city has not seen any significant enforcement issues associated with these gas stations or their sales of alcohol. When considering a conditional use permit for the concurrent sale of alcohol and gasoline, it must be found that the new use will not be detrimental to property or improvements in the vicinity of the project or to the public health, safety and welfare. Uh, additionally, it must be found that the conduct of the proposed use will not be, will be consistent with the city's general plan. Uh, their zoning regulations as well as be consistent and compliant with CEQA. Staff has made these findings as outlined in the draft resolution. And with that, staff recommends that your commission adopt the proposed draft resolution to find that the project is exempt from CEQA and to approve the conditional use permit, U twenty twenty-two zero zero six. And that will conclude my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now we will go to public comment on this item.
Before we go to public comment, Chair, excuse me. Uh, I, I'm not just sure whether the applicant was interested in, in making the presentation that they are, we should allow that.
Oh, yeah, very good. Thank, thank you for uh mentioning that. Um, is, let's see. Um, so I'm looking for Steve, uh, Steve Rawlings, would you like to speak?
I would. Uh, good, terrific, thank you. Hey, good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Rawlings. I'm here uh this evening on behalf of Chevron Corporation. Uh, joining me this evening are uh several members of the management team for Chevron, Brennan Beatty, who is the Vice President of, uh, in charge of merchandising, as well as uh Chelsea Maloney, who is also works in the merchandising side, and then Eric Aranda and Mari Bellamonte that are, uh, work on permits and licensing. And they're obviously available for any uh questions that anybody might have. Um, I, I wanted to just keep my comments brief. Um, uh, just for the record, we concur with staff's recommendation and we do agree to all of the draft conditions of approval as presented to you this evening. Um, uh, this uh station uh has been owned and operated by uh Chevron Corporation uh since the uh mid nineties. And they have been selling beer and wine there at this location since nineteen ninety-five. Uh, the request that is uh before you this evening is so that we could um add uh distilled spirits to the inventory of which would be stored in the, uh, behind our cash registers. Um, as part of our uh submission package, we submitted a, a fairly detailed security plan that really outlines um the policies and procedures that Chevron implements with uh all of their stores uh to ensure that uh, one, the store is always um operating in a clean environment and a very safe environment. Um, and that we are not a um public nuisance or a public safety concern. Um, we have, Chevron operates uh over three hundred gas stations and mini markets uh throughout the state of California uh with about half of these um selling alcohol. And um I can honestly say that they have a very, very good track record and of not being any kind of public safety issue for any of the communities that they um sell alcohol in. So with that, um, we're available for any, any questions that anybody has and um, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, very good. Um, let's see, I will now move on to public comment uh before we ask any questions of you. Um, I have two people. First is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, uh Chair Sharp. Um, I actually go to this station quite a lot. Um, I didn't okay, I, I guess I had, didn't understand the question. I, I thought they were asking to get permits to sell alcohol and wine. Um, I, I apologize if I, if, if I was incorrect in that if they already are selling this. I'd like to know what the hard liquor is that they're gonna be selling. And in terms of, I can understand beer and wine. Okay, that, that's, you know, people buy that all the time, you know, yesterday with the Super Bowl, et cetera. Um, but I'll tell you right now that if, you know, I go in there quite often to pick up things, you know, heading toward El Camino, whatever. I'm, if, if, and they do have uh regular food items in there. I would feel a little funny knowing now that they had harder alcohol in there because and that's, you know, that's just in terms of shopping issues. You, you're running the risk that somebody, you know, nobody's, you know, beer and wine, okay, that's fine. If, if you've got whiskey in there, you've got other things. You're running the risk that you, you could have somebody come flying in there, four o'clock in the afternoon and run off, you know, there could be a holdup. Somebody could run off, break the case, cause an incident. And you've got a lot of people in there that are just trying to buy potato chips and milk and get gas and head on down the road to wherever they're going. So, um, I, I want, and I have no problem with the gas station. Chevron's a good station. I'm glad it's there. But I will feel funny knowing that they've got hard liquor in there because you've also got access to two eighty there immediately. Which means if you've got a holdup, somebody's got an immediate access up to eighty. So I'm just throwing this out there that beer and wine are one thing, but if we're gonna be having hard alcohol, then we need to make sure that the appropriate actions are taken, that you're not gonna have people flying in there for a holdup and then compromise the people that are just buying gas. I, so in that regard, if, if we're gonna be doing this, let's make sure that there are parking places in front of the store so that someone coming in that is going to be purchasing things like alcohol, liquor, et cetera, have a place to park. They can come in there, you know, uh, go in. Um, and you're not gonna have people that are just coming into the bays to park and then go purchase hard liquor in the store, hold up the gas problem, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I understand, I, I'm sensitive that sales are very, you know, important to Chevron and mini marts, et cetera. But I just would be a little bit concerned about what, can you explain what the hard liquor is and who would be buying this? Thank you.
Time, okay. Um, yeah, now Lisa Warren.
Oh, okay, surprise. Hi. I wasn't gonna comment on this item, but I now feel that I want to. Um, this has happened over and over again where these kind of proposals have been made and, and, you know, people say you're promoting drinking and driving. And then that's argued, no, that's not the case. I, you know, beer and wine are alcohol, yes, but there's a lot of um establishments who are limited to beer and wine for a reason. And I think a lot of it is the cost of license to sell hard alcohol. But I do, I, it doesn't feel right to me, but I have heard over and over, there's no reason that you should assume that whoever's driving is gonna buy a fifth and guzzle it down before they take off. But why promote it? Why, it, I just wonder why, other than profits? And, you know, public safety to me is more important than profits. So it seems inappropriate, but I know it's done. So I'm not sure how to voice my concerns properly. Um, it's disappointing, actually. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Now we are on to Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. Oh, Rhoda, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, you know, the location is not in a, uh, booze desert. Right next door is Safeway, closes at two A M. And so if you wanna get hard liquor, you don't have to go far. And I concur with the, with the Lisa. Look, the only reason why the applicant would be applying for this would be to intensify their business. That's why they're bringing it forward. So to say that it wouldn't intensify, that, that just, that, that doesn't, that doesn't uh really cut the mustard for me. Um, you know, in what way does this, you know, benefit the fabric of our community? And because this has been brought forward to you, to this body this evening, that means that you have a discretion to say, what do you want our community to look like? And, you know, sometimes you might go to a store, you know, you go into the mini mart or whatever to buy a Band-Aid and then it's like, oh, cool, there's some candy bars there. Guess I'll have a candy bar. That looks pretty good, even though I'm on a diet, right? And so making that analogy, I don't think it's appropriate to have hard liquor in, in the gas station. And, and um, you know, it's, so you just can't, we, we shouldn't, we just shouldn't have it there. And uh, I wish I had been able to prepare my comments later. I wasn't planning on commenting on this, but I'm, I'm really up in arms that you know, everybody's looking for an, more ways to to destroy the fabric of our community, um, literally. So I thank you very much. Good night.
You're on mute, Chair.
I'm sorry. So Cupertino resident, you had your hand raised, um, originally. Did you still wanna talk? Cause you had lowered your hand. Um, okay, I guess not. Um, okay, okay, well, now we uh can bring this back to um the planning commission for discussion. Steve, did you wanna speak?
I did. Um, I, um, there was a question answered by uh Jennifer Griffin and I, I think she asked a very, very good question um about the types of hard alcohol that we were planning on inventorying. What's um, what's driving this is um, actually there are pre-made um cans uh that, that do used um alcoholic beverages. You can buy, you know, like a margarita in a can or a Paloma or things along those lines that are actually made with distilled spirits. Um, they're quite watered down when they are in uh one of these pre-made uh products. Uh, but that's the, uh, that's the driver for the request. We, we get um constant um customer requests for this type of product. It's, uh, our, our intention is not to be selling, you know, bottles of whiskey and so on, uh, and so forth. Our, our driver for this is these uh pre-made uh, you know, beverages. And so that's, and, and the area that we are um looking to display this in is literally a, uh, uh, about a four-foot shelf uh that is behind the uh cashier. So we do keep it away from customers um access to that. So when they do request that product, we do have to. So we do keep it away from customers' um access to that. So when they do request that product, we do have to physically get it off the shelf and and ring it up um after we've done a proper ID check. We always do have uh two two employees on duty so that we're able to have a lot of uh eyes on on the activity around there. And, you know, we just haven't experienced a lot of of public safety issues i- in the other stores that we have offered this type of product for. So anyway, with that, um um I don't know if anybody else on my team has anything else to add, but uh that was that was what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, and um what is the proof of those um those beverages? I know what you're referring to, but you said they're watered down. Are they like, you know, thirteen like proof like wine? Or are they twenty-five?
They're more like a, they're more like a a wine. I don't have the exact um uh product mixture in in there. Um but it's uh it's much more like a like a wine cooler type of product.
Okay, um all right, let's bring it back to the Planning Commission members. Wait, was there, now Rhody already spoke, so um. Okay, Ray, you have your hand raised. You can go first. You're muted, Ray.
I do have a question for Mr. Rawlins and uh it's really, these are the RTDs and seltzers that you're looking at? Is that pretty much it?
Oops, sorry. Yeah, um uh no, no, I'm sorry. Uh yes, those are, those are the types of products that are 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 the types of products.
Ready-to-drink cocktails, sorry, are ready-to-drink cocktails and seltzers is kinda looking at. Those are typically in the seventy-eight percent range to ten percent for alcohol content uh just for the rest of the team. Um and what expected revenue do you think that'll add uh to the store in terms of revenue per square feet? Is that is that a big bump, small bump? And how does that help with Cupertino's tax revenue?
It incrementally increases the overall sales by a couple of percentage points. Um um I don't have the exact um dollar figures or what that equates to on a per-square-foot um basis. Uh but it it would um accrete to, we already do sell the beer and wine, uh but it would accrete to a couple of percentage points uh by being able to sell the um pre-made hard seltzer or seltzers, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, good to know. And then the the other question I have for you is related to, um is there a time limit when these uh beverages are sold? Um do we have limitations or restrictions at the moment? So this is to our attorneys of the staff, so.
So the the time limit is gonna be when their hours of operation are, um and so they have a closing time of eleven PM. Yeah, that'll supersede the the limits that we place on beer and wine sales.
Okay, and a question to our sa- uh assistant attorney. Um uh the Plan Commission also has the power to limit the sales to just those two types of beverages and uh and and not to go to like a Scotch or to, you know, a whiskey or cognac or bourbon. Right? We we have that within our power if we wanted to do that limitation. Is that correct?
I believe you have substantial evidence to support a finding that would limit their right under the code. The code does allow them uh to seek the condition use permit for this purpose.
Okay, got it. And then back to Mr. Rawlins. I mean, uh it, when you, when you represent your clients uh in terms of uh you know, applying for these kind of permits, is is that limitation typically applied to a, you know, extra mile store? Or is that something that, you know, I I would, would you guys be comfortable with that, such a ju- a proposal that we made?
Uh we ha- I have not personally seen that specific of a condition of approval placed on um our requests in other communities there. Um I would have to defer to either Brennan or Chelsea with regards to um I it sounds to me like you 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 wanna limit our ability to be able to sell bottles like, you know, bottles of vodka and just restrict us to like pre-made um types of beverages, hard seltzers, et cetera. Is that, is that my understanding?
I don't, I don't have an opinion yet. I'm just trying to see what the options are, that's all, so that my fellow commissioners can I'm just asking the question just so that we know what our options are uh in something like that as well, so.
Sure, certainly.
Um thank you very much. I appreciate the safety report and many procedures that you guys put into place, so thank you.
Hey, Mooney, you have your hand raised. You're next.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So I have um a couple of questions. So uh one to the applicants. So um pardon my ignorance on alcohol, so I'm not, you know, fully world-versed with all the types of alcohols. So I understand, you know, you already have permit to sell certain type right now and you're asking for, you know, extending it to include some more. So can you explain the difference between now what you are selling today? What's, you know, what's being added, like in lemon tops?
Certainly. Um presently, we operate with what they call a uh type twenty license, uh which allows you the privilege to be able to sell beer and wine products uh for off-site consumption. And that that's what you're limited to, which would also include things like um wine coolers. But traditionally, we just sell, you know, uh six and twelve packs of of your traditional beers and then um seven hundred fifty milliliter bottles of wine are are typical inventory items, uh along with a few other things. But we're just strictly limited to those products only. The request is, is to allow us to upgrade our license to what they call a a type twenty-one license, which then extends the privilege of of not only being able to sell beer and wine, but also distilled spirits types of products.
So meaning the distilled types, meaning, you know, whiskey, rum, and, you know, all these, you know, high concentrate, like, you know, forty percent, you know, alcohol uh concentration type of products. Is that right?
Correct. That's what a type uh twenty-one license um would uh afford you the opportunity to do that. In addition, though, as I mentioned, our 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 main driver are the things that are these pre-made, like self-hard seltzers and and other products like that, um which are not in the in the big bottles.
Right. So so the beer and alcohol, I mean, beer and um uh wine, they are like, you know, six percent, thirteen percent range, you know, concentration, alcohol concentration, which is the ones that you are asking is, you know, like thirties and forties type of a concentration. Is that right?
Well, if we sell um individual bottles of like distilled spirits, your vodkas, your rums and so on and so forth, yes, they have a a higher concentration of alcohol there. Um and as we were discussing earlier, the the pre-made products have a much more
Lower.
Yeah, yeah, more in line with what you see of wine.
Right. And now, uh now you said, you know, it's for off-site consumption. That means, you know, nobody's allowed to consume these anywhere within the premise.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, okay. So they they can buy and take it wherever they are going and but they're not allowed to consume there.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. And uh I do have a couple of questions to the staff, right? So uh usually, you know, when the alcohol beverage uh permits are involved, there is an entity called, you know, ABC, right? You know, I think, you know, um alcohol beverage control board or something like that. So they usually get involved and, you know, and talk to the residents nearby and, you know, and 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 get their input and all that stuff. So I was wondering, you know, if that has happened and, you know, if we heard from the residents nearby. The reason I'm asking about this is, I myself, you know, went through this process when a nearby shop, you know, closer to my home, you know, applied for, you know, selling alcohol. I went through that A- ABC uh entity and worked with them to kind of, you know, work out a compromise, right? So I'm just curious, you know, if something like that not happened in this case.
So for this specific property, I know that they have been in the process of obtaining this type twenty-one license for a while. Um the alcohol beverage control officer who is working on the case has reached out to me multiple times to let me know that they're in the process of being ready to approve it. So I believe that they've gone through their noticing prior to this and have their, you know, different notices sent out at this point. Um additionally, you know, we also send out notices to the surrounding neighbors and we do have a lot of residences in this area who also receive those notices. To that extent, we have not received any comments back from from them.
Okay, okay. So the ABC has done their job of, you know, noticing the residents there. The city did their job of, you know, noticing the residents nearby, you know, within five hundred feet or something like that. And we haven't heard back from any of the residents. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And um.
Oh, Emmy, did you, were the residents, you know, that's right on the border of Sunnyvale and Cupertino. Were the Sunnyvale residents notified too?
They were as well, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what what, one more question. Um so do you know what's the closest distance to that location to a school, right? I'm trying to understand, you know, how close the schools are and, you know, do we, and and, you know, there should be some restrictions around, you know, what's allowed, you know, within certain distance of school versus, you know, what's not allowed. I'm just trying to understand, you know, there are any of those issues here.
You know, I don't know the distance to a school, but I'd be happy to take a look really quickly and and get back to that later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh Chair Scharf.
Okay, very good. Um next I see Commissioner Fang. Welcome, go ahead.
Always looking for that end view, but uh so first of all, uh thank you to the staff and to the applicant for the information. Um it seems to me that the uh application here is largely in compliance with the guidelines laid out in the municipal code. Uh my only, my only question actually, and we just touched on this briefly. This is an unusual corner of Cupertino. There are only two um two buildings, you know, the uh gas station and the building next to it, which are part of Cupertino and most of the surrounding area is Sunnyvale. Uh I did see that due diligence was done with the Sheriff's Department in terms of the record, the and history uh at at this station. Uh I don't know whether, did we reach out by any chance to um you know, Sunnyvale police or have that give Sunnyvale a an opportunity to comment on this?
Right. So the affected agencies are notified as part of part of the public hearing process, so they they were sent notices. Again, nothing received back at this point.
Okay, yeah. Uh so, yeah, I expect, you know, one of the, I think one of the big points in the um in the staff report was that, yeah, I think it was only five percent, three percent of the four areas is dedicated to alcoholic beverages. So not, you know, it's not a liquor store that uh that was uh being opened here. So in in general, uh you know, I I have no issues with the the opportunity, you know, if if this helps with the um health, you know, the kind of economic health of the station. Uh you know, I think that that um there's a benefit there and that there hasn't been a, you know, a history of problems. So uh you know, I I have no issues with this uh, you know, in supporting this uh application. Thank you.
Okay, um let's see. I see that um Brennan Beatty from Chevron wa- wanted to speak. The hand is up?
Yeah, yes. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um I would just wanted to, on behalf of Chevron, just kinda, just um highlight, you know, we have no intention at this property to to be, to replicate a Bevmo-type operation or an all-encompassing um, you know, liquor establishment. It's it's really there to supplement. It it's, it is a smaller location relative to our average-sized stores. Um we really enjoy doing business in Cupertino and the competition is really, the comp- our our customers have have told us that um they uh would look forward to this type of product. And then the competition has has moved in this direction. Um in case in point, the grocery store uh and they're at a at a bigger footprint. So the the four feet that um that we're proposing is is like Stephen mentioned, primarily gonna be the ready-to-drink uh alcohols. Um we do sell tequila and we do sell um vodka and we do sell rum. Um but we're we're not in every single flavor and we're not in every single brand and we won't be merchandising the liquor outside from the cashier area. It will require a cashier to be present for them to 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 touch the product. They, you know, it's it's kinda like tobacco. We're treating it like a tobacco product at this property. A fully regulated um commodity. So um we're very mindful as an organization of of what um bringing alcohol means in in every community that that we operate. And um I I'm a twenty-year veteran with Chevron and uh there was years early on where we never touched uh beer and wine. We were a big advocate of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And our, we we have blended significant training processes for our employees and our staff for them to, for carding. And we have an impeccable record and we really think that we're gonna have um, you know, a really positive foot forward when we're moved to this this alcohol position. But again, this isn't gonna define us. It's going to be a supplemental in uh um addition to our offering. And um and and to go back to the sales, um you know, Steve is correct. It it's it's not no so much the alcohol sales, but it's what people are purchasing with the alcohol. It's the the fresh food that we offer. It's the snacks, it's the treats. It all those collectively add to our mar- market basket. Um and we're just trying to stay relevant and compete with the competition. And that's that's the really the the truth of what, why we're here today.
Okay, very good. Um let me see, who else? Uh I'll go before you come back to Ray. Um I did wanna point out that um.
Chair, I think Seema's hands up?
I, is Seema's hands up? I don't see.
Yes, Chair. I believe Commissioner Lynn Scott's hands up.
Okay, why don't, oh, oh, yeah. For some reason, her hand is not yellow. I don't know why. It's a different color. I didn't see it. Okay, sorry. Go go ahead, um Commissioner Lynn Scott.
Thank you, Chair. My hand is not yellow, cause I'm not yellow. Um, okay. Um, okay, so I had a quick question. I think this might be for uh the staff. Um, you listed the other gas stations that have concurrent alcohol sales uh permits. And I just wanted to understand, are all of them type twenty or twen- type twenty-one? How many are type twenty? How many are type twenty-one? Uh cause that's not listed in the report.
Right. Um unfortunately, I don't have all the data. I can tell you the twenty-twelve permit was for strictly uh beer and wine sales. And then from any point beyond that, I'm not, not quite sure at this point.
So, sorry, to follow up to that, so would this be the first type twenty-one liquor license in our city? Do you, do we know?
That that's not something I have the answer to. Um I don't believe it would be the first type twenty-one in the city, but it may be for a gas station. Since that simply refers to being able to sell um harder liquors for off-site consumption.
Right. Is there any way to get that information? So to find out if this would be the first type twenty-one liquor license for a gas station in our city?
I can go ahead and see if that's information we have on file and available to me right now. Um and then I can get back to you on that. And then just to to follow up with the previous question regarding the schools while I'm on it, I did wanna note that there are two schools within a half-mile um as a bird flies of this current location.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um thank you, Commissioner Lynn Scott. Oh, before Ray and Mooney go again, you know, I'd like to point out um the corner of Danza and Pacifica, there's a um new get, well, it was an old seventy-six station. They're rebuilding it. Um it's, looks like it's ready to open in a month or so. And they explicitly did not ask um for a license to sell hard liquor. Um they said it would not be appropriate for the community. Um I was on council at the time. And um, you know, I wish there was something in between the type twenty and twenty-one because, you know, really nothing wrong with the hard seltzers, but um I don't really like the idea of selling um rum and whiskey and tequila at a gas station. And I I would like to know if those other stations are type twenty or twenty-one. Um I don't know how we can find that out. Um the, so staff does not know about this?
No, you know, I just took a look at the previous files and unfortunately, we don't have them scanned here. It would be something that would require me doing some uh actual microfiche data.
I'm sure. Yeah, go ahead, um Ray.
Yeah, Chair, I would suggest that we get the data um on where we are in terms of the permits from ABC. I think Commissioner Lynn Scott made a great point here. Uh we should actually have the information uh presented to us as to if they're all type twenty and we open the can and the floodgates on twenty-one, uh every other gas station's gonna want to do the same. I'm not sure what the impact is on the community. They'll stop the apply, this stuff goes through the ABC process. Mr. Rawlins will be happily employed uh in that process, uh but we should at least find out that information before we make a decision. I think it's kinda crucial to do that. Um I want to make a side commentary that's related to that. Um I I think it's wonderful that we are very uh business-friendly to a lot of folks in our in our community. Um, you know, sometimes we're very business-friendly and and I think like we should have this information available uh before we make a decision. Um I hope we are this residence-friendly when residents apply for uh permits as well. Uh sometimes I don't think we are, so, but that's my commentary on that. Uh but I would suggest, Chair, that maybe we get more information before we come back to understand the implications.
Very good. Um go ahead, Mooney.
Okay, so uh thank you, Emmy, for finding out the school distance. So you said, you know, it's about a half a mile. Is that right? To school?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, so um, I do have a couple of, you know, follow up questions, so oh, I think, you know, it was Mr. Brennan Beatty that he made a statement saying, you know, they currently sell um wine and uh, I think um, the type twenty one beverages, right, that's no wine and, you know, and beer. He also said, you know, they sell, you know, rum and tequila, so I'm kind of confused, I thought, no, rum and tequila, they come on, not type twenty one, not type twenty.
So, can I, I I might just offer a bit of clarification overall here, um, this application is for beer and wine sales. We do not have on record um an application for the sales of beer and wine. And then I believe that they currently possess a type twenty license, not associated with the city permits. Again, that's associated with the ABC licensing, uh, and they're going to a type twenty one license, which would allow for the distilled spirits as well for offsite consumption.
Right, so 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 they already have, you know, type twenty, and they're asking for type twenty one to add on, right? So, my understanding is, you know, type type twenty allows only, you know, beer and 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 wine. But I hear, I heard, you know, Mr. Brennan say that they also sell no rum and tequila there.
No, not, so we we sell rum and tequila, not at this location, but
Oh, but in other locate.
But we are, yeah, but we are very uh experienced in selling rum and tequila at at other municipalities and and whatnot.
Okay, 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 okay.
And that was our impeccable record comment on 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 that, is that.
Okay, okay, thanks for the clarification, and and also, um, this is a question to the city staff. Can we make this, you know, license, if we end up granting it, you know, is more like a supplemental license, not the main business? Because down the line, when the gas station closes and all that, I don't want this to become like, you know, a Bevmo type of, you know, location, right? Uh, because, you know, we gave them a type twenty one license now, right, so I just want to make sure that, no, this is more like, you know, a supplemental add on to, you know, a main business of, you know, selling gas and, you know, and the other, you know, stuff there, right?
Right, so this approval will be granted based on the plans that they have shown, so they their limitation is to kind of where, the areas where they have shown already. And a future use would require either a new use permit most likely, which would be reviewed by your commission.
Okay, okay, thanks.
If I could just add one thing on that question is the distinction between the license, which is not issued by the city and the use permit which is. So the use permit runs with the land, if a if a subsequent operator were to come in, they would be able to operate under the terms of that use permit, so however you condition this permit, that's what runs with the land. The type twenty or type twenty one license is an alcoholic beverage control issue, if if that makes it clear.
Actually, I I I'm curious, if I could get a clarification on that, so the conditional use that we're granting is independent of the specific type of license, uh, ABC license that the uh vendor has.
Correct, in order for the operator to do what they want to do, they need the appropriate license, and they need a conditional use permit from the city that will allow them to operate that way, so that's the right way to think about it.
Okay, great, and and there is no exclusion in the existing, um, you know, in our, in the city law with regard to, you know, a type twenty one license, is that, is that correct as well?
I would ask the attorney, we can place those restrictions if we choose to, is that correct?
Well, currently the CMC speaks of alcoholic beverages, uh, including uh beer or wine, so he he would contemplate uh, this type of liquor that that the applicant seeking to to sell. Whether they have a right to sell or not, of course, is a subject of another agency.
Okay, oh, so, um, Michael, someone mentioned that the use permit, um, let's say the gas station changed ownership, and the use permit goes to the new owner automatically? Because we had a gas station on Stelling and Stevens Creek that was very upset because the use permit didn't go along, would not transfer to. So I'm a little confused here. Uh, this was for the sale of tobacco, um, it was the Shell Station on the corner of Stelling and Stevens Creek. And they wanted to sell, but they would lose their tobacco, ability to sell tobacco. So does the use permit have to be when the ownership changes? Do they need a new use permit, or how does that work?
Uh, my understanding is consistent with with uh what uh the acting director, Luke Conley stated, that the conditional use permit will run with the land.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the circumstances of the prior case, Chair Sharp, but yeah, the use permits run with the property, so it's attached to who owns the land, not not the particular use that got the permit. That this would be transferable to, transferable to a subsequent owner.
Okay, the other case was for tobacco, and there was a ordinance passed that forbid the sale of tobacco near schools, but the gas station was grandfathered in, but if they had sold to, they were trying to sell to seven eleven, and they would not be able to sell tobacco. So, um, yeah, they were upset that the use permit did not go with the sale of the of the land. So I'm a little, uh, you know, not sure here about whi- which is actually true.
Well, Chair Sharp, if that, the answer to that question is remains to your decision, then I I can do some research and go back to you. Because I I don't know the circumstances of the case that that you've raised.
So, Michael, um, do we have the discretion or not to say, hey, beer and wine only, or beer, wine, and, you know, vodka, rum, tequila, et cetera?
So the CMC uh section that deals with this, as I said, governs alcoholic beverages, including beer and wine. It does not make a distinction, and at this point, uh, with the information available, the staff, they've they've determined and obtained uh evidence that it complies with with that code section, uh, and made these appropriate findings. I think during this meeting, there's been a lot of questions raised, um, so, yeah, to to the extent this this body wishes we can continue this, the direct staff to um, uh, look into this further, um, to answer some of the questions that have been raised.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know if all those other um gas stations are also selling hard liquor. And, you know, but maybe they've always had the right to do so, but they just didn't want to because, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I I would think if the if the commission is concerned about this being the first of its type, that it it would be important for staff to get the information. So that way you could, you're making a fully informed decision about the project.
Okay, which would mean postponement, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna be able to get it tonight, and I wouldn't want to try to do something hastily that would be inaccurate, so I would suggest, yeah, that that we would be continued and come back with the information you're requesting.
Okay, um, so is there a motion here to postpone or just not vote on this now, um, Mr. City Attorney?
Hey, Chair Sharp, I have a quick question before.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner.
You gotta start looking at my brown hand.
Yeah, I don't know why that does that, okay.
Yeah, sorry, um, so yeah, I second your question, I think that would be good information for us to have before we move forward. Um, I also just wanted some clarification, I I think, I think we got a sort of an answer from uh Michael. Um, but I just kind of wanted to clarify that further, so 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 I understand the difference in the the alcohol and control board is the one that sets, decides whether they get a a permit twenty one or or twenty uh twenty or twenty one, and then we decide the land use permit. So can we, do we have the discretion to say, okay, you know, they can only sell up to, I don't know, nineteen percent uh content alcohol, um, and then anything above that is is not included in the land use permit, like, do we have that kind of discretion?
Uh, I mean, there's there are certain findings, um, Commissioner Lin Scott, that needs to be made, and at this point, the findings that's been presented is that they comply with all of the standards set forth in CMC section nineteen point one three two, and so, um, you know, we would, we would need to have further research and find additional findings to show that, you know, uh, alcohol above a particular proof for particular alcohol content somehow is injurious to public health and safety uh in that area. So at this point, we don't have those type of findings, like those can't be made.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would only comment that in some respects, this may, taking this action this way may actually go in the other direction, you know, because you could easily discover here that the people who have class twenty license could have could have had class twenty one without, you know, coming back for additional approval. I believe that's correct as well, right?
Yeah, the 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 law, the CMC provides, it addresses simply alcohol beverages. You know, why, you know, other entities, businesses who obtain a conditional use permit pursuant to this section has chosen to only sell particular types of alcoholic beverages, it's, you know, it's, I can't speculate.
But but I suspect that, it would be my guess that this isn't going to cause, you know, this isn't going to trigger a, you know, alcohol war between gas stations, uh, so, you know, if it, I I think that there is some value in understanding, you know, historically, whether this is something new. But, yeah, as I had said before, I I actually don't have a problem with approving this as it, as it's um come to us today.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, I agree with Commissioner Fang, I mean, actually, I don't like it, but I don't have a problem with approving it, because I know, um, you know, I I don't know what additional information would do for us if they're actually entitled um to get to class twenty one.
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Chair, I believe um Brennan Beatty has his hand up, and I do have a comment, uh, but I'd be happy to go after Commissioner Lin Scott if she wants.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yep, thank you, I I could just shed a little light on on the history, um, you know, it hasn't for many years, it's always been just type twenty that convenience stores have been able to um offer that type of product to the community, uh, and within the last few years, um, California legislation has moved such that now gas stations are able to to um to to offer type twenty one, so that's probably why you don't see a preponderance of stores that have type twenty one right now. Um, we have three hundred stores, and we currently have twenty seven type twenty one licenses among those three hundred stores. Um, of those three hundred stores, about a hundred and seventy five have beer and wine licenses. So just to give you a perspective, it's 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 a newer um progression of of the industry. And so that's probably why you're, you may be seeing that there's not a lot of um uh proponents in 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 your immediate area. We see it as a differentiator, um, again, we we're not leading, we don't advertise at our pumps. We don't um advertise on the windows, we don't, we're, it's it's a, it's an offering for our 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 customers that have told us that this, they would stop more frequently if if they had that, and um and so that's 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 really why we're here today, is um, you know, we've identified as Cupertino as a strategic location, we have no intention of leaving Cupertino, we have no intention of selling this property, um, it's, you know, we've we've been here since nineteen ninety one. And um, we're just trying to maximize the the facility and and provide the offering, and and it's a smaller C-store relative to our footprint, and so anything that we can do to um add additional revenue in terms of the snacks, the cakes, the cookies, we have a fresh food offering that is phenomenal, if you get a chance, um, and um, it's um, it's just, it's 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 an overall offering that we're trying to present. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I think you're muted again.
Okay, so Ray and then Seema.
Yeah, I do have a question, right, and and I I kind of had the suspicion that the type twenty one uh ABC licenses weren't offered to um gas stations until a few years back, I think the state legislature has been passing a lot of crazy things, uh, not saying that's crazy, uh, but they've been a lot more permissive uh as a legislature than than in general. My my comment to you is that, do you have to get a special, did your insurance premiums go up for that? Um, as a result of getting a type twenty one, or is there a change on insurance premiums to, to anyone on the Chevron team?
Yeah, you don't know, um, but but but, um, unfortunately, luckily, we're self insured. So there's no, there's no extra premiums, we we're able to lean on on the on the bigger Chevron, but but we operate as a subsidiary of Chevron. The 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 company operated stores are are called Chevron Stations Inc., and that's a subsidiary of Chevron. And so, um, but again, we're under the the umbrella of of Big Chevron.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, go ahead, Seema.
Um, thanks, Stephen, um, so question for, I think for the city staff, just so I understand, I think some thing that David said, so the other gas stations that have a land use permit to sell alcohol could upgrade to a twenty one, uh, to a permit twenty one at any time and wouldn't have to come back to the city for approval, is that, did I hear that correctly?
So, and Michael or Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that they would in fact need to come back as their conditions typically would stipulate the sale of beer and wine was approved, um, and that it did not strictly say, at least for the last two that I have seen, that that was strictly outlined in the conditions, so again, Michael or Luke, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, Emmy, sorry, Michael, um, uh, other work I've done in other cities, you generally tie the use permit to the type of ABC license, because it's easier to track, I think also one of the issues that if you get in a gray area between harder liquor and beer and wine, then you could potentially be setting up an enforcement issue. Uh, who would be going in to monitor, so generally the permits have tracked one license or the other. And if you go to upgrade from beer and wine only, you have to modify your use permit accordingly too.
Got it, great, thank you.
Acting Director Conley, quick question, um, what is the um duration of these conditional use permits, are they indefinite, or how can we put a time on it?
Use permits are generally, they run on on less time condition, and I would also, I'll defer to uh Michael on this, I know that I've seen differing opinions about whether you can even time condition a use permit, but absent a time commission, they run indefinitely.
Okay, Michael, did you wanna say anything about that?
Yeah, I I'm not aware of the uh duration limits.
Okay, Mooney.
Yeah, so I I'll speak from my experience, right, so I worked with the ABC on granting a permission, permit to, you know, one of the neighboring stores close to my home, and I was the only resident, you know, that, you know, registered a voice when they did the noticing, and I was able to attach, you know, tons of conditions, including, you know, time, right? And and few other conditions, but unfortunately, enforcing that is a big challenge. We do see constant violation of those, in fact, you know, my neighbors are constantly, you know, bringing up to me saying, hey, you know, all these conditions you attach, they are violating it, so, and they are complaining to the city, and they're complaining to, you know, Sheriff's Office. Even they called, you know, ABC a few times, but it's a, you know, difficult exercise, you know, trying to chase those things afterwards, but it is possible to attach, you know, the time criteria and, you know, a few other criterias at the ABC level, not at the city level, no, I was able to do that, not the, when it was being discussed by ABC and ABC was was working with the residents, I was one of the residents, you know, that worked with them to attach some conditions. But enforcement is a big challenge, I do see, you know, constant violation of those attached conditions.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up, so we are, I think we are ready for a motion of some sort. Anybody, you know, wants to make a motion to either continue or to vote on, vote on this, um? Anybody, you know, wants to make a motion to either continue or to vote on vote on this um? I mean, all right, well, I will make a motion uh that the planning commission adopt the proposed draft draft resolution. For application U twenty twenty two oh oh six, uh fi- find the project exempt from CEQA and approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now, well, technically, we should have done that. Now we can have more discussion um if you wish. Um or we can just vote on that if no one else has anything to say. Um Mooney, go ahead.
So so. I'm I'm not comfortable voting on it, you know, with a lot of unknowns. I understand, you know, they are within the code and all that stuff. So I would prefer for, you know, for the staff to come back with, you know, answers to all those questions, like for example, to other gas stations. Do they have, you know, type twenty one and and, you know, how many and, you know, and all that stuff? Um that would be my preference. And, you know, I will feel comfortable, you know, voting on something, you know, that I'm knowing all the answers to the questions, right? So this one has, you know, a lot of unknowns, so I'm not comfortable voting on this.
Yeah, I mean, I like that idea too, but it was my understanding that it's almost irrelevant whether those other stations have. A type twenty one or not. If I um if Michael's correct, it's like we don't, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but. This, we do not have discretion over this. Is that an accurate statement or? Do we have discretion to deny a type twenty one?
So um to to the extent that we're looking at this application, we view it in terms of what the code provides. At this point, it defines um uh the the sale of alcoholic beverages, including beer and wine. And the extent they've made findings to support the compliance with this, um that's currently was before you. Uh if there are if there are questions that uh the planning commission has and you wish staff to go use more research um. Uh to establish that perhaps there may be findings that would show the opposite, that there's 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 that it that it doesn't comply with the code. Um then that's a discretion you have to to change the conditions.
Well, you just said beer and wine, but this is not just, they already have beer and wine. This is for hard liquor.
The the code says the purpose of this chapter is to establish regulations pertaining to those establishments which can which concurrently sell motor vehicle fuel. And alcoholic beverages, comma, including beer and wine. And so I I think it contemplates. Alcohol beverages.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Um uh let's see, who else their hand raised? Brennan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So I I would just um I would I encourage the council, you know, as. As a company operated network, you know, our we have significant controls in place. We have our own mystery shop program. And we also have, uh you know, we're, we have the Extra Mile brand associated with us. So uh Extra Mile is a franchise and we're a partner and an owner in in that brand. And so they also have a um a mystery shop program, so that we're constantly uh grading ourselves. On what good looks like and we grade ourselves on on the tobacco, on the on the alcohol. Um and and that's to prevent any type of um uh sting and um and and. False representation to the the community in terms of of carding and IDing and um, you know, the. The competition in in the Cupertino area, they're not all company operated facilities, they're owner operator facilities. And so the organizational capability that our facility has. We think is is paramount relative to our competition. And so even though they're not offering type twenty one or they're not, they may not be offering type twenty one. Um we're gonna be responsible, uh we're gonna be, you know, um customer facing and community facing and. Um we we're putting checks and balances in everything that we do to make sure that, you know, we're gonna be right for the community. And I I just want to make sure that that was that was known and and we're not, you're not necessarily gonna see that in in a single owner operator. O- operation, whi- which is what we uh on a C store basis were competing against. But then you've got the big grocery store across the way from us that that um would have similar controls that we have. Um so I just I just think that um the the risk at this particular facility. Because that we're present in all of our uh organizational capability that we employ and the checks and balances, you know, we're. We're gonna do a really uh paramount offering for the community.
Okay, um how how often, if ever, does Chevron sell their um company owned stations um?
Yeah, so fun fact, fun fact, we're the only oil company that has company operated stations. Back in the day, all of the oil companies started selling their their company ops across the country and Chevron elected to to keep them. So um yeah, we do not divest or or sell um our stores on a regular basis. We actually have a strategy where we're growing, we're adding one to two uh new to Chevron locations a year. Um you know, Steve said that we we operated in in California, but we actually go as far as Oregon and Washington. Uh that's our three hundred store footprint goes up to Oregon and Washington. So um we're we're not in an aggressive growth mode. Where we like three hundred, three hundred and ten is kind of where we're comfortable with. Um and um. You know, uh we don't um. We we don't have an aggressive uh divestment strategy. So there's there's no definitive, hey, we're gonna sell three at a year. We we don't, yeah.
Sure, a point of order, I'm not sure that we can actually ask the uh applicant at this point in the middle of this discussion, so just in general, so.
Okay, um.
Um I do have some comments and and questions, but I do I do want to know more from. Um Commissioner Madipatla, Vice Chair Madipatla, uh with some of the conditions he put into place, uh his A B C advocate, A B C efforts in the past. And I also want to um make a point that I I do agree with Acting Director Connolly that. Um we probably need some more information and and to actually substitute a motion. Once I hear from Commissioner Madipatla to just continue this at a different point, so but those are my suggestions, but I'd love to hear from Commissioner Madip.
Yeah, so I'll I'll be brief.
Vice Chair, sorry.
Yeah, so so I don't remember all the conditions, like I I was able to attach, you know, ten to eleven conditions. For A B C to issue the uh use permit at that location and. For example, you know, they wanted to sell the the last sale is not nine o'clock, nine P M, right? So they wanted to sell up until two A M in the morning. That was their request, right? But I was able to attach a condition that said, no, uh last sale is nine o'clock and the consumption should end at, you know, ten o'clock or something like that, right? It's a restaurant. And likewise, you know, the doors on the back side, you know. Should be always closed, no consumption allowed, you know, anywhere outside the restaurant. So there are tons of conditions attached like that. And I don't remember all of them, but I can dig up on, you know, and share in an email to the staff.
Okay, and I do take point to uh Mister Brennan's point, uh Mister Beatty's point. I mean, uh you know, Jackson and Chevron have put in effective programs around the country. I'm very aware of what they've done. Uh with their ownership and and their controls, and I know they're there, but I do would like to put in a substitute motion, uh Chair, to continue this. Um siding with staff here uh to actually um get more information and and get all the information that uh Commissioner Lynn Scott. I was looking for myself, Commissioner Madipatla. Is there, may I make that motion and for substitute motion to continue?
I don't believe anyone ever seconded my motion, so um.
I I did, actually I did.
Commissioner Feng did, Commissioner Feng did.
Okay, um yeah, you can do a substitute motion.
I think the substitute motion is to follow staff's recommendation, Acting Director Connolly's uh recommendation to get more information. Um and I think it's up to the commission to make sure we have all that information. I I do apologize to the applicant. Uh I I think um uh we're just trying to make sure that we have the best information we have in front of us. Uh from staff uh as to where the licenses are uh and as to what restrictions we can place. I think we may actually have to do a little bit of research. Assistant Attorney Wu, as to what restrictions we can place based on where we are in the C M C if we were to do so, so that we're in compliance. So that's a substitute motion is to have a continuance of this discussion. Is there a second is what I'm asking for, Chair?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Um okay, can we have a vote on the substitute motion then?
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Scott?
Aye.
Commissioner Wong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla?
Yes.
And Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, very good. Um so yeah, we'll have to have this at another meeting and um. Yeah, hopefully one of the questions will be, can we limit the uh percentage of alcohol in these other um. Items that are being sold there. Um okay, we are on to.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, good night.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Okay. Old business, there's no old business listed. Um so we are on to staff and commission reports. Uh who would like to go first? Mister Ray, why don't you go? Even though you didn't raise your hand. Ray, do you have any reports?
Um I don't have any specific reports. Um I mean, I've I've just been attending uh Cali meetings. I've been attending. Uh larger conferences in general, um looking at planning, planning opportunities and uh and just been reading up on the uh planning. The League League of California Cities, uh League of Cities are kind of have information and any updates they're putting, so that's pretty much why I'm here.
Okay, um so the staff, um I see item four for the Planning Commissioners Academy, which I believe is March twenty ninth. To thirty first, is that correct? Um. Who who from staff is speaking to this? Sarah or Luke?
Um I will defer it to Sarah. I think she's got more information on this than than I have at present, so I'll have her.
Thank you, um Luke. Um for this item, it is a meeting or a training that. Does take place every year. This year, it will be taking place in Garden Grove, um California. As Chair Sharp had mentioned, this will be taking place. Um at the end of March. Um the last time we had. Um commissioners invited to this training, we did register three attendees. Uh two did attend, I believe you were one of the two, Chair Sharp, um that attended the last one. So we are um. For any commissioners who are interested in attending and are available, um you're more than welcome to coordinate with me. Um I will be handling the registration and travel accommodations, at least for the hotel. Um as recommended by the cities for this particular training.
Great, and um yeah, it was a great training. Um you know, whether you've been on. Planning Commission before, like Commissioner Feng or on City Council like I was, I. I still learned a lot by attending this, especially the sessions on CEQA. And a lot of this changes every year, so I would recommend if, you know, anyone that can attend, it would be uh it it's worthwhile to go. Um. And.
I I would agree as well. I mean, I think that 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 uh so I I believe I've attended three times. In the past and uh in every case, you know, a lot of the uh information is very topical. You know, kind of the current thinking on a lot of different topics and it's uh very informative.
I would encourage, oh, I would encourage the public to also look, I mean, the presentations are available after the event and they're all was publicly listed. So you can also take a look at them as well. And if you can't attend, definitely look at last year's. I mean, all the presentations are up there and I think you learn a lot as well, so.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, the staff and commission reports, so we are on to future agenda setting. Um I guess we will have come back to the um Chevron station issue at some point in the future. Um. And Luke, is there any other um things you can think of? Uh you know, do you know when the Coach House uh? Thing is coming back to planning commission?
No, Chair Sharp, I'm I don't have a date for the Coach House. Um. Or really any other items, um be happy to provide an update on that at the next meeting though and and see if it has a date. Uh to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing definite yet.
Okay, and um Ray, go ahead.
Oh, just my usual. Um I still getting a lot of complaints from the residents about where we are on. You know, five G and setting architectural standards. I know they're public poles, um they're not private poles. I I think there's still a lot of questions from the. Community about that. Um they are worried about aesthetics, so emphasize that, not necessary health reasons, and we have done. Our darnest to um take a very long time to get to this. And and I think a lot of residents are very upset at the moment. And uh and I wanted to make sure at least we take those issues seriously. I know it might be in another jurisdiction as our Assistant Attorney will tell us. Deputy Attorney, but I I I even the informational hearing or status from the city, I think would be wonderful. Uh a lot of residents are still complaining and I, you know, I don't want to direct them all at us, but I I I hope people are listening.
So Luke, is there any way we can do anything on a a presentation on five G, there a? Um you know, some kind of presentation or study session or anything like that, because it.
Or just another status.
This for years.
So this I, this 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 item has come before the city council. I don't recall the dates offhand. Um Commissioner Wong, I'm happy to find that date. Um send it to you and then um to the extent the members of the public ask about status, then you can refer them to that city council meeting.
Sure, Chair, uh thank you, Assistant uh City Attorney. Uh Chair, I believe it's within our purview to actually have a. Um in informational session if we need to um about this or study session on the conversation on how cities. Have put architectural standards in place using their planning commissions to do so, to set those architectural standards. Uh and and believe it or not, our city attorney uh is actually an expert in this. Um our our current city attorney is an. An expert in this, he has done that before, and and I'm hoping we can actually learn from them so we can expedite the process, so. It's not that we have any lack the expertise, we actually have amazing expertise in our staff and I'm hoping we can tap into that in a study session.
All right, thank you. Um and Sarah, you have your hand raised, is it?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Um I just wanted to add, as I'm I forgot to earlier, um. As you know, the executive emergency order, I should say, from the government or the state will be ending on February twenty eighth. Um. So that means for our first meeting in March, which should be March fourteenth, there is anticipated to be a planning commission meeting. Um in terms of training on the hybrid format for the planning commission, that is going to be coordinated with our video team and myself. Um and that is tentatively scheduled for sometime during the week of March fifth. Um so just letting you all know and we will be emailing or I will be emailing um the commissioners to gather meeting times. We do need to have. Um to ensure we stick to Brown Act Brown Act regulations, um that we have three separate meetings. Um two commissioners at a time and a third meeting with just one commissioner. Um that may run concurrent with other commissions that are also doing their hybrid training. Um but again, more information will come out um for that. Um closer to the date. And also wanted to just remind the commission and the public um to fill out the survey for revitalizing Memorial Park. Um their specific plan survey is still live on Engage Cupertino, so just wanted to put a plug out there on behalf of our public works team. Thank you.
Okay, and Mooney, um you have your hand raised.
Yeah, so so real quick update. So I did attend the mayor's meeting last week. On behalf on behalf of the planning commission, so I provided update, you know, asked, you know, what was happening in our last couple of meetings and also, you know, talked about uh. Where we are on the housing element submission, like this is for the benefit of, you know, uh. The mayor, vice mayor, and also, you know, uh the other commissioners from other commissions. And most of the commission reports were uh to do with um. The changes that are occurring there, right? In terms of, you know, the new chair and vice chair. And a lot of the commission meetings were were also canceled during holidays, right? So there's not significant, you know, update from any of them. Uh but mayor did ask, you know, if you want these meetings to be in person, the monthly, you know, mayor's meeting. And some of us provided feedback, you know, I was one of the first ones to say, you know, hey, let's have this as, you know. Uh Zoom meetings, so that way, you know, people are not required to come in person for this meeting. So. I mayor was in support of that and also, you know, there was a request from the mayor. To change it from five o'clock, you know, six o'clock in the evening, so that, you know, most of the commissioners that were present, you know, they accepted. They said, you know, yeah, that's fine. Uh because mayor had a conflict at five o'clock, so she wanted it to be not six o'clock. So most everybody was fine. Our request was not to make it uh video meetings and I believe, you know, mayor and vice mayor, you know. Uh consented to um keeping it a video video meetings, not required in person.
So I apologize interrupting, but this this is the future agenda setting portion of the meeting, Commissioner Madipatla.
Sorry, yeah, it should have been a staff and commission report, I'm sorry.
Okay, 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 my apologies, yeah.
No, that's okay. Okay, um so if there's nothing else, I don't see, oh wait, Michael. Okay, Michael's hand is down. Okay, Michael's hand is down. Is anyone else having their hand up? I do not see it. So seeing that, I think we can adjourn and everyone have a good remainder of the round. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Welcome, David, again.
Yeah, glad to have you guys.